Evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, June 26th at 6:30 in the evening, and it's an absolutely gorgeous evening. Let the record show that everybody's here and happy.
And opposed.
There you go, okay, I didn't want to project too much there. Council members, you have minutes from the June 12th meeting in front of you, and today we need your opinion, your approval, not opinion, but approval.
Well, my opinion is yes.
Oh, is it so that I, your opinion, yes, that's okay, that's a motion I heard.
Yes.
And someone?
And I would second that opinion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go on to this here public comments, and I want to hear a little bit about the Hoppin Heritage Festival. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, thanks for having me. To give you a quick update on the Hoppin Heritage Festival, so I am Kate Sworzer, President of the Independence Downtown Association. So we had the opportunity to kick over the planning of the event this year, we're very excited about it. We wanted to essentially keep the same intent behind the block, or behind the Hoppin Heritage Party, that has been planned in the past. Due to some really terrible years of weather and declining attendance because of that, we wanted to change it up a little bit and rewrite it, so we are calling it the Hoppin Heritage Block, right? We also really want to take the focus back onto Main Street and with our local businesses, and give them the opportunity to fully participate. One of the major themes and feedback that we received from those businesses was that by having it down in the park, people flock to the park and people businesses out of it happens. So with a lot of the summer festivals that we have, pick up a little bit more different, and then, like I said, break it back up onto the Main Street, for the local Main Street for local businesses, and have that kind of hop festival and the beer trail, if you will, that brings it into the local businesses, the local restaurants. So we are gonna create a passport system with, like I said, a beer trail, that encourages people to stop and get their passport scanned while visiting some of the local businesses. Then we are also encouraging businesses that don't have a restaurant or a bar to get involved in other ways, to be able to promote their businesses and just highlight our downtown. So we are not allowing any outside vendors, so again, we're focusing on our restaurants and bars to go provide that for our visitors. We are going to have a street fair where we're allowing vendors to come in and stuff things, and a craft fair. We are not going to propose closing down Main Street, because that is really difficult going through that whole process, and we frankly don't have the numbers to show that we can afford that. We would like to propose closing down C Street on each side of Main Street, so that we can have a music, sort of a music stage, and then again, having a vendor fair on the other side of it. We are gonna have street musicians that are kind of playing along the street corners, so we can kind of get that block pretty vibe that people are wanting to have. And then, at night, starting around probably 6:30, 7:00, we're going to have a opening act and then a main music act, to kind of bring more people downtown. And then we are going to have a limited hour beer tent, that would be a fundraiser for Ida, in terms of being able to raise additional funds to be able to have the event for next year. We are also gonna be focusing a lot on the heritage activities, and the museum has been a really active partner, in terms of how do we incorporate them into the planning of this, to kind of focus on the history and the kids activities as well. We were fortunate enough to get a $10,000 grant from the Long Island Valley Visitors Association, so they are helping us to promote tourism, promote events within the Long Island Valley. And to date, we have been sending out kind of save the date cards, we have a vendor call out, we're working on a sponsorship package, and then next, we are going to be looking at kind of a competition's plan for the layout, and then we will be coming to the city at some point to do and ask for other ways we can make a partner on providing security fencing, the stage, the tank, and those sorts of activities. That's an update on what we're up to right now, or have to answer any questions?
Questions for presenter?
Just a couple of comments. I just happened to notice, Kate, that the same day that this is, there's going to be an emergency drill down the park.
We had, I know that SERPs have been talking about that, and what we understand is it was not certified yet.
Okay.
Yeah, they had also talked about potentially having the event further down more towards like this, or the other areas.
Okay. That's, that's kind of historic, though, the emergency aspect.
Yeah.
Also, there will be a ghost walk on Friday night.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
And that will be a little different this year, because we're going to put hosts at all of the locations, and the tourists will be more of a self-guided flavor.
And we are also participating in the flip and joliprain, so we're gonna have an Ida float that we're having there.
Great. If there's a question, please.
So I'm just curious of that, that east part of C Street that leads down into the park, you're saying you're closing that as well?
We would like to look at closing it up to the roundabout, so that people can still through Osford Lane be down and realize the parking down there.
Okay, that was my concern, thank you.
But then to have kind of the beer tent or the music thing, yeah.
Additional questions? Thanks for taking the time to come and visit with us, and thanks to Ida for picking this up, I think that's a really good merit.
Thank you.
Great. Before we go to community recycling programs, I'd like to do some public comment in here, I have several, that's okay with everybody. First person is Marianne Holdzinger?
Yes.
Good evening, welcome to city council.
Thank you. My name is Marianne Holdzinger, I live in Sunset Meadows area, southwest Independence, and I've gone to some of the planning meetings, and they suggest I come here and also voice some of my concerns, so I just, I made a list, so, you know, I'm just gonna kind of go through it.
That's fine.
And then, moving up from there. Sunset Meadows, as you've been down there, it's really a good mix of people, we have retirees, singles, young families, and we've all gone to know each other. And for myself, I'm retired, and I put my life savings in it, so I'm here for the long haul, hopefully. So I am a little bit concerned about some of the things that I'm seeing and hearing. And one of the things is Liberty Park. Now, nothing was on, online about it, I talked to the planning commission, they were gonna try to rectify some of that. But we now know there are 97 homes coming in, phase one is, infrastructure is done, but phase two ready to go, as you start selling the lots, and some of our lots have been sold. We're very concerned about the swell area, as if you are not aware, there was a creek that kind of ran behind, that when during winter months, you would have running water going through there, very marshy type land, so what they built was a swell, there's like a 10-foot easement, I guess you could say, that when the homeowner buys a lot, I guess they have to take care of that. And that's kind of a question, because that does breed mosquitoes and such. There's also Catch Basin, I'm very familiar with Catch Basin, being from Southern California, but a Catch Basin here would catch mostly the excess of water. And there is a lot of water coming from Center Street, although as long as it's on Center Street, the water drains back, not front to the street. So that is a huge, huge problem, and you're concerned, because that's standing water. Now, yeah, does evaporate, it does over time, but it also is a breeding ground, so who maintains that? Who sprays more, or what vector control comes in and takes care of that? We'd like to know. We're also concerned about the traffic. 97 homes, the same, two cars per home, so we're talking about the one, there are 200 cars, but like even in my neighborhood, some of us have one car, and some of us have more than four. Where do these cars go? So there's only one access point at this time, going into Chestnut, so that's first group of homes, it'll be 30 or 40 homes going in there, there's only one access, in and out, that means Line Street and Chestnut, it's gonna be a park. We have kids that ride bikes in the street, light in the street, it's like an accident waiting to happen. And that's signed in county, the traffic on 7th. For those of you who live on 7th and travel 7th, you know what a mess that is. The streets are narrow, you have to slow down, let one car pass, when the other car comes down, I mean, it is a mess, and they're trying to get up onto Monmouth. And I know that developer is gonna put a chair laying there, and that would be nice, but there's no forward stop, there's no blinking light, there's nothing there, so it is a huge problem. We really are concerned about the punch-through road, and two years ago, I attended the traffic meeting, and I was told, that's about 10 years down the road. We're not planning anything for 10 years. Well, we're gonna have to think of something a little bit more than 10 years down the road, the way building is going on. I know that a bridge has to be built over the railroad, and I know that's like 1.5 million, I reported at one point. Or a punch-through over to Towmanage, going through property, farm property, and that is a concern, but it's something that cannot be put off for 10 years down the road, it needs to be addressed now, because if we keep approving for buildings to be going on in that southwest area, what's it gonna take? You know, we're putting ourselves at risk, we're putting the city at risk of that sub avenue. Also, in the Liberty Park area, there was supposed to be a park at the lower, so it would be the southeast corner. So today, while I was walking, probably a couple of homeowners there in 7th, they said, oh, that thing's going on behind us. I go, au contraire, there is, that's phase two, congratulations. They're very upset. Matter of fact, one homeowner actually called and talked to someone in the city about it, so don't worry about it, it's like they're being built behind your house, that's not true. The park was moved, to the other side of Mount Fur, which would be the northeast corner of that last block, okay? I don't think the homeowners there even know that that's happening. So some people are beginning to sell their houses, people, they're beginning to sell. Randi Meadows, now Randi Meadows, and Mr. Cummings, who's an engineer, talked at the last planning commission meeting, and he would like to see this mixed use. And he's gonna be coming before the city to talk about mixed use. His concern was the difficulty in building in a wetland area, yeah, it's pretty wet back there, I have to say. But I didn't move to Sunset Meadows to have a mixed use right next door. I don't want to see my property values going down, and neither do the other people who live there, you know? They're beautiful homes, they're, for the most part, most of those homes are very well-built, and they'll still look really good 20 years down the road. And that is a concern, we want to keep our values up. But I am very concerned, as well, some of the neighbors are concerned about his idea of mixed use, and I was a little bit shocked when he said that, because he wants to say to work with him on that, to change the code, so I'm sure you'll be hearing about it, maybe it happened already. Really, what our dream is for independence, we know this is a great little bedroom community, we know that, you know, people from Corvallis can definitely live here, who work in Corvallis or Salem, it's just kind of in between. And how do we make our city where it is something, definitely where people want to live here? We put the green belts in, we put the parks in, we built quality homes, not just throwing something up because someone wants to make them back. That's just not the way to do it. Slow insurance, more greater than fast rip and crack, and that is kind of why we're seeing it. So these are some of the issues that we brought up before at the planning meeting, and they said that I'm gonna talk to you guys, especially about the swell issue and the mosquitoes and that kind of thing.
So what I'm gonna ask staff to do is to connect, and I'm saying you for having written, I was keeping track, but if we can have staff get together with Ms. Holdzinger, and be able to get the answers to her questions, and we'd probably be interested in knowing some of the same, same answers along, what does that sound?
Yeah, that's fine, we can, if you would be, I think Karen has your contact information?
Yes.
Yeah, I have.
I'll try to set up a time that several of our staff could sit out with you, and go through as many of those issues as we can, and certainly we'll report back to council on some of that conversation.
It would be great, because when I first got interested in this, I went to the city website, because several years ago, I actually saw a plan for what now is Liberty Park, that was actually put on the website. There is nothing, so if someone is even curious, there is nothing to look at. The only way I got those plans, I went and talked to the guy who did the infrastructure, and he sat with a clipboard, and I took pictures and I posted it on Facebook. I shouldn't have to do that, that should be available to the public.
Well, let's see what we can do. Thank you for taking the time to come in, and, yes, Karen, I have the, there's a slip right here. Mr. Bowles, I think you'd like to visit with us this evening. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, council. Hi, Sarah. So, I just had a question about this Confederate flag issue I've been harping on for the last year, I'm gonna give you this in 1 minute and 30 seconds. So, I went to the Independence Days meeting, I had two weeks, and asked a question, made comments, it went pretty well, mostly, and at the end of the session, I posed this hypothetical question. So the Confederate flag vendor that has free speech protection to sell a product, and hypothetically, another vendor wanted to sell Nazi flags, would those same protections extend to them? And Ms. Thompson said, no, a Nazi flag is hate speech, and the opinion of the city attorney, hate speech is unprotected speech. So, I stopped, there's, thank you very much, and I just like something from the city attorney via manager that says, hate speech is unprotected speech, an email or something, and any other supporting framework that says the Confederate flag, good, Nazi flag, bad, some kind of supporting argument, right?
Did you want to, I'm not sure that's actually a distinction we can make, so you may not, you, our volunteer may not advise you properly.
Yeah, right, but, yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to throw that out, because they are representing the city, and there is some discussion, but I'm saying hypothetically, you have that in mind.
Right, I understand your, and I'm inclined to probably go the same direction as the manager was, I think that was, but I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah.
Although I do play one.
So, an example of unprotected speech would be shouting fire in a movie theater, right, because of likely results of danger, because they're trying to evacuate already.
Or true rail.
The sale of the other Confederate flag or Nazi flag, I don't think that they distinguish them, I think both are by and large protected by the free speech of that.
So nobody submits that kind of application?
I, I so agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you for, I just want to take a moment, I, as we mentioned last time, I appreciate, and I think from visiting with council, we all appreciate your thoughts and concerns, and we're, for myself, I'm in the same place, and as we said in the paper, sometimes the First Amendment is uncomfortable, I, I don't like having to be, wish we could, but we can't.
Right.
And so, anyway, but I appreciate your passion and concern, both for our community, well, and for the whole country, I just wanted to take a moment to say that.
Thanks.
Karen? Yes, sir?
I wonder if we could just add, I was gonna cover this with my manager on this, but, so a couple of things we do know since our last meeting, because we did say that we come back to you on some of this. You did pass at some point, about a year or so, I believe, a resolution of inclusion, of being an inclusionary community. We are having that made into signage, that will be posted proximate to that vendor, and I think somewhere perhaps at an entry point, also we'll have handouts of that actual resolution, so people can see that the city, where our values are, as a city, or council's values are. And I think also that vendor actually has been asked not to make those sales this year, it may not do that, I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, I thought that idea, it's, it's a possible, you know, it doesn't need to ask.
So thanks for taking the time to come in, I appreciate it. Is there anybody else who has public comment at this point? I'm gonna keep us moving then. Mr. Klein, you have comments about community recycling program, I think, there's a staff report, and...
Well, I'm gonna, well, yes.
And we made this meeting a little bit longer than just our agreed-upwork, because I think, kind of, pulled a couple of things, and the same things altogether, please do.
So you do have a staff report from us, since that time, we have sent you a copy of the staff report from the City of Monmouth, and their city manager with us tonight, it's Josh Brandt, the owner, the new owner of the operation. I just want to say that I think, and City of Monmouth gave that, probably, a little urgency than we did in our approach to it, I think we took the traditional approach, that, you know, if you're going to consider a, you know, a rate adjustment, you would want to have a hearing together with that. Not necessarily really, this is not really presented as a rates, it's presented rather as a surcharge on existing rates, it is a bit of a distinction, and it is more likely to be temporary in nature. So if you did want to consider that this evening, you do have a form of resolution that has been shared with you, that you could take that up tonight if you wanted to act. I know that Brands is anxious to get an early onset of that surcharge, so they can, you know, start playing catch-up. Clearly, they're losing end of what's going on in the recycling market, you know, primarily China, that we, you know, all of us have been impacted by the fact that we are now limited to just plastics one and two, which is only 25% of the, of the plastic waste stream that we can do. In addition, these, you know, Brands has seen somewhere between a three and four time increase in, or decrease, in the revenue that they get off their coal mangled products. So it's clearly they're losing money, they lose money every month, and they don't want to fall any from behind them, they have to, they do need to, you know, we need them to, you know, we need them to be flush, operating in the, in the black, as our sole provider of those services. So if you have questions, and I have, there's not a lot, and I can feel Josh is here, you can certainly speak to more of those, but if you wish to take that up this evening, we have no objection, you have the form of requisite of resolution in front of you to consider that. If you have further questions, we certainly can take this in the, in the way we've taken this up in the past.
Oh, Karen? Do you have the resolution?
Yeah. Oh, we will have the resolution.
And I think you received that electronically, Karen.
It's, it's the same.
Yeah, thank you. Counselors, since you, since we're putting this on, do you have questions for staff about, and if staff can answer them, Mr. Brandt is here, and so we can, we're gonna just hold this all together, if that's okay with everybody, and we'll just, so, please do.
I've done some individual research and talking on this, and I thought, first of all, that the Ida Miser Observer did a very good job in their reporting on it, because it was very clear about how the opportunities to deal with our mixed recycling have gone down significantly. I am proud when I go to other states and they say, what's recycling? Because that's something I think that we have as a real advantage of Oregonians, and frankly, for myself, I would pay an extra dollar and 90 cents a month just to have that ability to recycle. I think doing differently would be a step backwards.
Do other people have questions as well, it's about this, that you want to ask anybody? Mr. Brandt, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Mark.
Thanks, thank you for coming in today. Have you folks put out, I've read a little bit in the papers, and I haven't followed it, have you folks put out recycling information, that with, under the new rules, to local residents and people?
Yes, we have, actually, in the bills, it just started to go.
Oh, it just started?
We're a little bit behind, part of that is my fault, I wouldn't say behind, but I was kind of hoping something bigger than me would come in and resolve this situation, whether it be China accepting something, whether it be government bigger than me coming up with a plan, Oregon itself coming up with a plan, and it just isn't there yet. Unfortunately, the prices are skyrocketing from our processor, just going in a little bit more detail, the IUs to get anywhere between $0 and $7 a ton, I take an average of 100 tons there a month, I am now paying $107 a ton, actually, 107.51, so it's roughly about $10,000 swing a month. You add that with cardboard, that is as low as $24 a ton right now, and you add yard debris, which is a very expensive thing when it comes to those three plastic thing, the big one, it is a big hit to us right now. And so, kind of get back to getting things out, we've done that, we're in the works of creating a website, that, if I'm hoping, fingers crossed, for the first time in 65 years, we will have a website and the ability to pay online. Hopefully, that is in August, I am trying to bring us back from 1970 to 2018, it takes a little bit of time. So yes, there are a few things that we have been planned, one thing that I presented to the city of Monmouth was Clay Warner, who is actually the supervisor, supervisor, operations supervisor at Garden Services, which is where we take our coal mangled cardboard, he lives in Monmouth, he's a Monmouth resident, he has offered up his time, and I offer up mine, to have any meeting anywhere for both communities, if they want to hear on a baker's scale, where the processor plans ongoing. Unfortunately, for me, there's not a lot of outlets for me to take with coal mangled, most of the outlets that I could use are actually far more expensive than garden services even is, and so, unfortunately, they did pay the price.
I have an additional follow-up question. Is there anything that we, as a community or collective communities, can do to make our recycling more desirable, or are we just too small a cog in the, in the giant world of international recycling?
Not really, there's some things that I have in mind, they're maybe a little bit big, part of it is, my facility is dated, I would like to see a facility change in the next five years with that, with community help, we could actually possibly figure out a way to advance our, make the state of our recycling facility. If I can separate every single commodity, there is profit in that. Unfortunately, the coal mangled that happened 15 years ago or so was great then, now with the market difficult, it makes it very hard, because we have to retrain people that have been doing it for 15 years to say, hey, and by the way, now it's only ones and twos, and it's gotta be, although it's always been this way, but it's clean to drive, it definitely creates an issue for the consumer as well, which I understand. But, other than that, on a good note, is our community, we've been working hard, kind of behind the scenes, I sort through my 24-hour depot, arms-deep, every day, and I sort through that myself, to help cover costs and control that, but as a community, we're sitting about 14% contamination, we have gotten down at times as low as seven, which is actually really good statewide, most, some sit quite a bit higher than that, and there are a few that are lower than that. Beacon, Beacon City is really good with theirs, so I've been trying to reach out to see what they do differently, they have different services, though, but we are moving in the right direction. Again, this is indeed creating something just randomly, it is a national problem, and definitely a state problem, and unfortunately, I'm just trying to find a balance.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Are there additional questions for your staff, or for Brandon this evening? Thank you, gentlemen. Counselors, what do you want to do? We can, we can consider a fee surcharge, we can consider to do nothing, we could do, you know, the world is open to us, but I think, I think the case has been made that this is not a, this is probably something we need to take, to take a look at, and...
I'm thinking of a lot of other great options, to be honest.
Yeah.
I think this might be our best, our best option. What do you folks?
I, I, I think they do over your whole job, and I like your services, so I feel that we should contribute and help them out as much as we can.
I'd also, I could, sorry to interrupt, what we, what we've kind of implemented to the city is maybe a six-month reconvene, see where the market's at. Again, we're not actually trying to make money on it, they're trying to cover it, so currently, right now, that dollar 90 is still 6, I do 16 cents every stop, that doesn't include my truck or my driver, but we're just trying to find a good number, I took an average, as you can see, at the hardcore, that'll hopefully get us there, then we can reconvene and find out after six months.
Thank you, you know, I think that's a really good suggestion, that we take a look at this, that we have, you know, if we decide to do something, we have it come back to us in January, and see if anything's changed, plus or there are minuses, and I do recognize that this is, this is not a, this is not a additional profit, this is covering legitimate expenses that, that they have. This is covering legitimate expenses that they have. Does that sound like an approach?
I like the idea that Monmouth has already done some work on this, and I think we would be in a great place to be able to show some solidarity.
Yeah, and, and I really appreciate the fact that our staff has said, hey, our sister city did good staff work on this also, and we're in. So I think we're all, unless I'm reading this wrong, I think we're all saying the same thing. If that's okay, if somebody wants to suggest specific action, you can do so at this time.
I move to approve a dollar ninety surcharge on all cars EOW recycling, EOW yard debris and container services. Oh, oh, sorry. I move to adopt resolution number eighteen dash one forty-eight.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is everybody okay with that?
I just have a question.
You do?
Do we need to add in there that we'd like to look at this again?
Right.
Right, and I was going to ask the staff about that. Do we need to include that in the resolution? Or can we leave that open and bring that back, which...
I think you can leave that open and then just ask that they pay return in six months.
I have a tracking log.
You have a tracking log. Council feel okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, go forth and do good. Okay, we have a public hearing on the CDBG business Oregon grant application. Do I have that correct? You do. Thank you. And... So we have Diana Sotanovic on the table, the public hearing, and good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome to City Council.
Well, thank you. You know, I have to say that last time we were before you with this request was in two thousand and six in the old building, and I dare say you've really made some changes. Anyway, for the record, my name is Diana Satanovich. I'm a program developer with Hope Community Development Corporation with office in Dallas, Oregon. We serve all of the whole county. So I am before you this evening, as Karen has pointed out, to, in this hearing, to take comments from citizens on both the community development needs and the housing needs in the city or county and this proposed project for grant funding. And so I'm just going to read into the record what is required.
Please.
The city of Independence is eligible to apply for a twenty eighteen community development block grant from Business Oregon. Community development block grant funds come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants can be used for public facilities and housing improvements, primarily for persons with low and moderate incomes. Approximately twelve million will be awarded to Oregon non-metropolitan cities and counties in twenty eighteen. The maximum grant the city or county can receive is two million five hundred thousand. The maximum grant the city or county can receive for a housing rehabilitation project is four hundred thousand. The city of Independence is preparing an application for a twenty eighteen community development block grant from Business Oregon for a Hope County Regional Housing Rehabilitation Project to provide housing repairs essential to health and safety in Independence, Monmouth, Dallas, Hall City and Hope County. It is estimated that the proposed project will benefit at least twenty-five persons, of whom one hundred percent will be low or moderate income. A public hearing will be held, is being held, in Independence before the City Council at six thirty today on June twenty-sixth at the Independent City Center, five by five South Main Street, Independence, Oregon. The purpose of this hearing is for the Independent City Council to obtain citizen views and to respond to questions and comments about community development and housing needs, especially the needs of low and moderate income persons as well as other needs in the community that might be assisted with a community development block grant project and this proposed project. Written comments were welcome also and would have to have been received by June twenty-second, twenty eighteen at the Independent City Center, five by five South Main Street, Independence, Oregon, nine seven three five one. Both oral and written comments would be considered by the Independent City Council in deciding whether to apply. The location of the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Please contact Karen Johnson, City Recorder, at five oh three eight three eight one two one two if you will need any special accommodations to attend or participate in the meeting. More information about Oregon Community Development Block Grants, the proposed project and records about the city of Independence' past use of community development block grant funds is available for public review at five by five South Main Street, Independence, Oregon during regular office hours and as noted as requested. If special accommodations are needed, please notify Karen Johnson, City Recorder, at five oh three eight three one two one two so that appropriate assistance can be provided. Permanent involuntary displacement of persons or businesses is not anticipated as a result from the proposed project. If displacement becomes necessary, alternatives will be examined to minimize the displacement and provide required reasonable benefits to those displaced. Any low and moderate income housing that is demolished or converted to a nephew's will be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a very complete announcement.
It's a required.
I, I understand and appreciate that. So council members, do you have questions of the speaker? I would just offer a comment that I'm glad we're taking a look as a county at low and moderate housing needs for people in the community. And in our, and I mean the broad community, so I'm glad we're taking a look at that.
You, you may not know this, but Independence is part of the regional housing rehabilitation. This is our, this will be our seventh application. Every two years we apply for five to ten.
Great. Are there additional questions or any comments to be made from the council at this point? Is there anybody in the public out there that wishes to speak related to this matter? Hearing, not seeing anybody moving forward without objection, and we close the public hearing? We good?
I think you have to do, did you approve application?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the application.
Yes, now that we've closed the public hearing, we need to approve that the staff move forward and make the application.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
If someone would make the appropriate motion, please.
My move that the city of Independence apply for a two thousand and eighteen community development block grant from Business Oregon to provide housing rehabilitation assistance for owner-occupied low middle income households in Hope County.
A motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time to come with you. We do appreciate it. Moving forward, I have in front of you, first, under just announcements, I'll just let you know, had the pleasure of working with Regional Solutions this last week. We're trying to move forward with a number of economic development efforts. And we had some very difficult decisions, trying to figure out what recommended to move forward for possible funding from Business Oregon. So we met at the Capitol Building, Davis Conference Room, and I served, I'm one of the gubernatorial appointments along with some county commissioners, private sector folks and other managers. And so, lest you think I don't do anything sometimes.
It pays so much.
Yeah, it's, it's a vacation day for my real job, and my wife is like, "Okay, why don't we do some of that for us?" In your packet, council members, you have, there is a vacancy on the planning commission, and I'm recommending Kate Schwartzler to be a midterm appointment for the planning commission. You see her application in there. I think we all know her. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
If someone would officially make this okay? Great. A motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Continuing forward, let's, we have council liaisons on reports, and let's just move through these and wait.
So with Minnet, there's a few positive things to talk about. First, I think when we passed the budget, it was the last session. You looked at the fee schedule from the, that Minnet supplied to us. I think with the debt service, we're all seeing it go the way we want. Where the cities are contributing less and Minnet's giving more. I'm sure everybody's seen the kind of gig deal billboards around, so that is related to. Minnet now offers gigabit service, internet service, so anybody who feels their service is quite fast enough, give them a call, they'll speed you up. And then when Congress failed to act on the FCC rules, it was a couple of weeks ago, net neutrality was basically effectively repealed, and Minnet has issued a statement basically saying that net neutrality will continue to live on with Minnet. They will do everything in their power to continue to uphold the same standards of net neutrality as if they were still in place.
Great. Thank you for your report. Moving forward, Parks and Record.
I actually apologize. I didn't have a report for that.
Okay. That's, so, planning commission, councillor, what else? Do you have anything that we should?
Yeah, Mr. Young came before the planning commission to request a height extension on the building going in along C Street, their behind roof, and that was granted. It's awful undercover, so he's good to go.
Great. Okay. I'm going to keep us moving forward. Also, Mr. City Manager, I think you have a report. Then go ahead and get it from there.
Well, with your knowledge, I wonder if you could let the, our consulting team from Portland go ahead and meet and then I'll pick up after that, so that would be the Parks Master Plan in Green Oaks Consulting.
Sound good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Focus in the balls for us. Sir Viner, you want to introduce this and...
I'm providing the lead in here.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So, just, yeah, my little background here, you're all familiar. In two thousand and fifteen, we did a Parks Master Plan update. Took a look at all of our parks to secure the community, just trying to identify things that were already there, what we want to see happen in the next twenty years, changing trends for recreation. In order to just take that, that into picture perspective. One of the things that came out of that plan was looking at the entirety of the two and a half miles of riverfronts that we own and really trying to conceptualize that as a, as kind of a unified block or greenway for recreation in the community. Kind of trying to stall a little bit so I can officially modify my thing, but, yeah. Anyways, you know, you've all seen the nice image that we have of that, that area. And as you also know, we've really done, we've done some work on that. We've got amphitheaters there, the soccer fields are there, the north end of town, the program. We've got the Donner Park in, there's a lot of pieces that are right there. And now, one of the things that that particular diagram looked at was River View Park. And saying, okay, you know, the amphitheater really is a jewel of the community. The rest of River View Park, though, still really kind of remains in its original nineteen seventies era condition, which really was influenced by the presence of LoRang, which is no longer there. So, there it is. Do you mind just looking at this real quick? Just a page down there. Yeah. Oh, okay, we'll just keep talking. Ah, it's just taking a while, but... So, yeah, anyways, you know, this is what kind of what was in the master plan for River View Park. And really kind of envisioning, you've got that whole big parking area that was there from, from when there was LoRang there. So we're saying, all right, you know, let's take and look at that, that area, everything sort of outside of the amphitheater, and see how that can be reworked, what issues we need to look at, how we can better accommodate folks wanting to get closer to the river for the recreation. Also, really, how that can better integrate with the Independence Landing Park that's currently being developed. You know, we designed and developed that part of that park on the lower terrace there, but we want to make sure there's a unified flow from that park all the way to through River View Park. We don't end up with, you know, one design here, one design there, and trails not connecting or styles differing dramatically. So that was really kind of the goal here, to do that. If you look at the next slide. We contracted the preworks to come in and do this work. This is the kind of project scheduled here. We really, you know, this being River View Park, we wanted to place a heavy emphasis on public outreach, on publicly employed as far as what we should be thinking about doing there. We had several public open houses at the library and also the St. Patrick's Church. And we're now really at the end of this, this task list here at the very bottom. What we're presenting to you today is essentially the final draft. We're not presenting any type of adoption materials for you today because this is an opportunity for us to present the final draft to you, get sort of last input, comments, feedback. I know dramatic functions that you have within River View Park. Some of those existing programs were very strongly responded to. And then finally, we heard a strong desire for improved social amenities. Next slide, please. So after we had the original open houses and we received this feedback, we went back to the laboratory and we wanted to generate two very distinct plans to test some different ideas before we came back for the community and our, as well as our city. Now, what you'll see here, there is one commonality that you see between these two schemes. And I'll be using this pointer behind you here, if that works. Oh, I guess not. Just to orient you a little bit, downstream on this image is to the right, upstream is to the left, and the north is also to the right in this image. In both of these schemes, we wanted to make a distinct effort to clean up the park and clarify circulation, how well with the structure with which we could organize the amenities within the park. And really, we wanted to first and foremost make sure that we were generating a park that the city and community could be proud of. This first scheme here, you will see there is a very strong circulation pattern through the park. We wanted to make sure that circulation was on the forefront of how we were structuring the park, to make sure that it's safe and very accessible. In both the original schemes we passed before the community, we took efforts at creating an accessible circuit through the park. So you'll see that in both of these schemes. This first scheme here, as distinct from the next one, you'll note that circulation, vehicular circulation extends all the way into the center of the park, providing approximately sixty-five parking stalls. This parking also allowed vehicular and accessible access to the central region of the park. You'll see around numbers seven, six, and eleven, those are the play area, the exercise area, and the large pavilion respectively. As part of the vehicular circulation, we also are proposing to lower the existing fill that's out there associated with the parking lot to provide stronger visual connections to within the park. You'll see featured on this plan is also a splash pad up around the existing amphitheater. And on the right side of your image, you'll note that we are maintaining the vehicular access down to the existing gravel bar just east of the biker boater campground. Next slide, please. In this scheme, again, you'll note that a very similar pedestrian circulation pattern, creating a pedestrian circuit, accessible circuit through the park. Now, one of the standout differences here is that we pushed vehicular access and parking to the south of the park, and this had a number of effects. One, drop-off for boats and for cars is centralized on that southern part of the park. This opened up a very large region along the waterfront. You can see a clear corridor from the amphitheater down to the water that's not obstructed by parking. As you move towards that central area, where you will again see play and exercise programs, but they have been pushed a little bit into the background and not quite as, even as a central location. In this scheme, you'll note that where that roundabout was in the previous scheme has been replaced with a gathering space and a boardwalk ramp system allowing pedestrian access down to the water. And then within the biker boater area, the campground, you'll note that we've inserted a new program, which is a... And then within the biker boater area, the campground, you'll note that we've inserted a new program, which is a interpretive walkway and what an overlook. Next slide, please. Now, after the second open house, we began to engage the community. We had a great time doing it and had some good food. And we learned a couple pretty clear feedback messages. One, parking should be configured to optimize use of the park. There was a pretty distinct difference between those two schemes, 65 parking stalls and approximately 33 parking stalls. It's important to include a splash pad. Again, play and splash pad program topped the list to make our document there that that was important. There's a preference for multiple cupboard shelters instead of one large pavilion. The second scheme that showed presented a distribution of cupboard shelters as opposed to that one large pavilion you saw in the first scheme. There's a preference for the play exercise areas to be centrally located, and we heard numerous occasions that it's important to be, for these facilities to be accessible and have accessible parking stalls in close proximity. We heard that it's important to include a waterfront gathering space, important to optimize river access opportunities that exist today to include the nature trails and what an interpretive opportunities that I mentioned in that second scheme. And we heard, a theme I heard throughout both open houses, is that it's important for the park to be kid-friendly and safe. Safety is a prime concern as it relates to vehicular and river access. And then finally, it's important for park improvements to support and enhance the land and river and national ecosystems. Now, with that feedback, next slide, please. We entered the feedback and created the greatest hits, really. We took the two schemes and developed the recommended master plan, which I'll see here in front of you now. And I will take you through the list of amenities that were included to propose. One, the waterfront multi-use trail. Again, part of that pedestrian circuit is strongly featured in the preferred scheme, creating roughly a one-third mile loop through the park fully accessible. The splash pad you will see has been included up by the amphitheater, having the effect of extending that paved space when the splash pad is not in use. So that would allow for flexibility program when the splash pad is turned off. This parking scheme finds a hybrid approach to the two schemes that you saw previously, landing at approximately 30, 50 parking stalls. We have continued to extend the parking into the center and core area of River View Park, allowing that accessible parking access to the amenities that we described earlier. And we have tried to create a green connection through the center of the park, and so it doesn't read as such an imposing parking area like the first scheme that we talked about. This scheme too proposes to lower parking elevation to create a stronger visual connection from the interior of the park down to the river. The play area, exercise area are featured in the center of the park, close to both the drop off area and the accessible parking stalls, and are also orchestrated along with the location of some of the small picnic shelters. We heard the message during our open houses that it would be a benefit to consolidate these features, so parents coming to the park with children, have them in close eyesight, potentially benefit from shaded areas, or also engage the exercise equipment. The river access in this location, in this scheme, you'll see that there are two points of access. Like the first scheme we looked at, this scheme maintains the existing vehicular drive down to the gravel bar. This scheme proposes that it would be controllable, potentially by a bollard if it is deemed needed. This would be a close proximity to the biker boater campground to build on that program and continue to serve as a draw to visitors using the land and river trail. The second access point you'll see is on the left of your image in the bottom left, which is associated with some accommodating river grids. This would be a location where it would be easy to walk down the bank and enter a location in the river where there are is a shallow water entry potentially for waiting or swimming. And then we have a watercraft, I'm sorry, a river overlook, which is located centrally in the plan as an extension of a large lawn space and reaches out towards the river, and it is also tied into that pedestrian circuit. Watercraft staging and a bike kiosk are located over by the roundabout, also supporting the biker boater campground as well as the potentially vehicular access down to the river. You'll note that the biker boater campground is shown with improved plantings around it to clarify where the campgrounds are. It is also developed with a camp post that you see located to the left of Meadow. And like the second scheme we looked at previously, we have included interpretive wetland trail and overlook as this is potentially a wonderful learning opportunity and interpretive, interpretive location. Next slide, please. So it has been really, really wonderful to work on this project. Independence has a really unique public waterfront, and we have been working closely with Sean, David, the community, and many of the members in this room to come up with a vision that will connect the River View Park with some of the other public open space to the south, Independence Landing, as well as to the continuation of the trail system to the north, all the way to park complexes. And make sure that River View Park can serve as an anchor for the activation of downtown and support the community who values and enriches the place. With that, I'll turn the mic over to Sean.
So I think that's really the extent of our presentation. If you have questions or thoughts, love to hear them. Like I said, we didn't deliberately, did not bring any, you know, adopting resolutions tonight, just wanted to give you guys a chance to look at it, think about it, and then we'll be doing that in one of the subsequent council meetings. So if you've got any questions, feel free to.
Questions on this point?
I would just like to say, if we're gonna bring it up pretty soon, we could have a little advanced copy of the study. I appreciate that.
Absolutely beautiful and very well done. Are we going to retain the disc golf course?
Yes. Yeah, it was not specifically listed in there, but that definitely hopefully could work in.
Other comments from this end?
I'm just really grateful for the fact that you did in fact listen to substantial community input in merging schemes A and B. Thank you. It is, it's amazing to see it. You guys did a wonderful job.
Yes, I do have a question regarding the first structures. When it's time to make decisions on it, are you including some community input or request some input from some of the local, necessarily chocolate, especially specialties?
Yeah, and that's actually a good point to clarify. This is the master plan. This is not something we're gonna go out and build tomorrow. So there will be a lot of opportunities for dialing this in even further and saying, all right, we're gonna be hard to build a playground. This is specifically what we're gonna build, and that's not what you're going to want to reach out to the community and say, hey, let's, you know, help us design this there, help us figure out what really makes the most sense here.
Awesome. Thank you. I want to really compliment, comment, compliment. One, I really appreciated the strong efforts in community outreach. I had the chance to, to join you when you went to St. Patrick's Church, and it was just 150 people participating, and not just a little bit. I mean, it was, it was pretty intense. Every, all members of the family were pretty intense. I really appreciate that, that outreach and putting things together. And like what's been also said, this is really exciting that over the years to come, because this won't all happen in one big money. But then in the years to come, you know, we've done pretty well when we've had a plan, when we have a plan and work the plan, and taking the opportunities as they come of both funding and other people who want to help, whether it's, you know, in the past, we've used the National Guard, Boy Scouts, and Girl Scouts, and lots of folks to help make things happen. So I'm really excited that this, this will become our plan for the future. And I like how it fits, it fits with all the parts, and I'm excited for the future here. So thank you for doing that. We look forward to being able to have an opportunity to officially provide an okie dokie on the plan so that we can begin working on the plan. Anything else, folks? Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Klein, I think it's back to you.
Here, we're just council, thank you. So just a typical list. A couple of things from Karen. We, as you know, there's an election pending and the deadline's in August, so if you have, if anybody has questions about getting your metals in, if anybody in the audience, whatever, please contact Karen about any election questions you may have. Similarly, if you could reach out to Karen by Friday, if you have, if you do have an interest or note in attending the League's annual conference in September. Again, if you're new to the council or not been to any of these in the past, this one should be an improved then, I believe. I think the level of training will be spent up, so it should be, it'll be at Hilton. Correct? Yeah, at Hilton. Anyway, if you can contact Karen by Friday and one way or another confirm your plans to either attend or not attend, that would help her with, with securing rooms and securing registrations and the other necessities. I don't know if Karen, can we hand out the priority requests from the LSC?
I haven't yet, but I thought I'd hear it.
Okay. So we have, we will have those out to you shortly, but the League has requested inputs, they do typically in advance of the upcoming legislative session for priorities from our city council. There, this year might be a tad unique that they're asking not only for your top four, they're asking for your bottom four things that really are of no interest to you, that you like the legislature, not to waste their time on, you know, which probably led you a better result than the.
May I add to your, to your comments, please?
Yes.
Thank you. As you know, I'm a past president of the League of Oregon Cities, and the the priorities that you are getting a chance to look at have been built by policy committees, statewide policy committees of other elected officials, everything from water, taxation, transportation, telecom, there's a whole huge groups of people who've worked on this, and they put together a group of recommendations, and in all 241 cities in Oregon, you're getting to get the opportunity to submit what their priorities are. So you're gonna get those tonight, and at the second meeting in July, we'll, we'll figure out what our top four are as a group, and then submit that. Top to bottom, that's right. And so we'll get a chance to weigh in, and we'll submit that. Then the Board of Directors of the League of Oregon Cities will meet in mid-August to officially adopt what our work strategy and priorities are for the League in the coming legislative session, because there's a lot of work to be done to both move things forward and protect this from errant thoughts that some may have when they get to the Capitol Building. And so it is pretty important, so just want to let you know that the work we do makes a huge difference in what goes through. And I just also want, I'll be part of that phone call also as a past president. I also want to let you know that I'm really excited with what the League's been doing lately. There's some new leadership. There's a lot of really, really good things that are going on, and I really encourage you to attend the conference if you can. It, it really is worth it, and you'll learn a lot from other elected officials. So thank you, Mr. Klein, for letting me step all over your presentation, as I so frequently do.
Yeah, that's great. So a couple of meetings that you have coming up on normal, your normal, your regular session and your first meeting July 29th will be a work session. It will be dedicated to essentially to you meeting with the recruiter. I will not be there that evening, so you can say all sorts of nasty things about me, how you want the next person to be nothing like me, that kind of, those kinds of things. Anyway, you'll have that opportunity to meet with them, both, them, both collectively and individually. And I believe Amanda will be, will be working with there and helping set that up. That's on the 10th. The evening before, we're asking you to convene a special session at 6:00 PM, we don't like it, not at 6:30, but at 6:00 PM, with respect to Minnet. And so that is, that's a special meeting. You will have your attorney, friends of my telephone, it'll be mostly executive session. So, but there will be a public portion to that as well. On the same topic as we, as we're there, since we're there anyway, you will, you may know in the paper tomorrow that I, that there will be a public notice that talks about a bond issue, a meeting that is in Parker, Arizona, so if you rush, you can get down there for their July 13th meeting. You may not be interested or you're a war. But there will be, they'll be considering a bond issue. That bond issue is described as in, as it is in the notice. It does, it does impact on Minnet, the matters that are being discussed, we discussed by the Minnet Board on this Friday, at which time there is, depending on how that goes, there will be a more public information available. What you know, you'll know from the paper, that's all that can be said publicly on this matter. For, for the time being, we're all under nondisclosure agreements on this process. So, that's what I get to, that is a federally required notice. That's why that's out in advance of the actual disclosure date, if you will.
Yes.
What? So if you're looking for public and works employees this week, you're gonna be, well, if you go out and look, you'll hang around the Fourth of July events, state events, you'll find one thing or another, because they're extremely busy getting ready for that event, and pretty much the community's best again, but that doesn't take much work and support, just. But a little work, they're working wherever kind of going. And anyway, that's ongoing, so if you're looking for that. The building apartment is actually starting to experience some backlogs. We, they are getting, there is a lot of permits in hand at this point in time, application, so we are working on whatever we can to get that a little more efficient. So we need a software solution, working on that, doing very hard, and we will be hopefully implement something shortly to help relieve that backlog. So, but we are working to get all those permits processed and get those folks out on the road, out on the streets, and in their lots, working in order. There's tons and tons of activity in the building, as you can see out there. The brewery will be late, it's open a little bit. I told you last time, maybe dog has been back up, I sort of fudge on that, I guess. There is some asbestos to be abated over there, so you'll, at some point in time, I expect to be seeing folks in spaces over there removing some of the asbestos in the building. That's a standard practice, and then they'll be available to finish up the remodeled interior and get those folks over and then underway. Mechanical has completed their refinance, they have paid us off, we are no longer a lien holder on that property. So we are out of that business entirely, and we received full payment for what was outstanding. Parking lot is all but completely nearly completed. Over behind the things you park, the striping will be held off until after the fourth. At which side, also, we're gonna have lights installed. Our vehicle charging stations are first, we'll have a little event around that. As you look north of our building here, if you see where there's, if there's an excavation occurred, that is for landscaping, that should be completed, and at least the dirt put back in place before the, before the holidays, so that we don't have people, we don't have trip and fall hazard over there. We don't want coming back from the fireworks. Check it out. The Vought Way Wine Tavern should be open as a temporary occupancy for the fourth, so that's kind of exciting. It'll be temporary, it's not, it won't be totally completed, but they have, well, their temporary dormits, political OLCC. So they're pretty much ready to go, just kind of finish some interior work. If you're anywhere by there, they're working awfully hard to get that done. We received a grant from Transportation Bureau of Management, State, State Office, to do a targeted industry analysis for the industrial property around the airport. We've been, has been in the works for a while, so we're pretty pleased to get that done. It'll help us identify industry clusters that can leverage proximity to the airport, any infrastructure or landings changes needed to make this happen. So that's fairly long-winded to say that we are working to get jobs out there very hard, and we've got a grant to help us do that and identify what. hard and we've got a grant out to do that and identify what kinds of jobs and what we need to do to make that happen in terms of public investment or private investment. We're completing our training on the purchase situation for the Fourth, so looking forward to a great launch on that. It should be fun. They're coming and flying in again this weekend and the actual rollout will be here throughout the festival. So that should be, yeah, pretty fun. Let's see, we have presented several times this last week, had a couple of national tech conferences in Portland about tech innovation efforts in Independence, just continuing to grow our presence there and far more tracking partnership with Intel. Lots of interest for folks on other people wanting to do things. So Independence just continues to be, you know, be that brand. And we are meeting here shortly also with our, the film crew to do, we're not quite set up for it yet, but we will be sometime somewhere putting together the, the layout, the messaging and the layout and the program for the film crews to do by C R A T V. I mentioned this last time, so we've got that, all those contracts in place and are working on that. Sean will be speaking and Representative Evans will be at the ability for this Wednesday. At the same time, there will be an AgTech meetup touring the Brickyard Dairy Wednesday night again, that's something we co-sponsor those events. For those of you who are interested in the workings of the airport master plan, 5:30 this Thursday in the Event Center will be an open house. There is a committee meeting just before that, I believe that's open to the public.
Yeah, to listen.
Listen and not participate. So, but that's available to the public as well. I don't believe there's a participation.
In all my time.
Yeah, they'll be on trees, I'm burning all that. And then just by the water, as you know, the state continues to experience their problems. We have made arrangements, Department of Correction, they should be looking to bolster their supply from our system. And of course, we have the, for Salem residents, we have places to fill up, you know, that live here, work in Salem. They're welcome to come by, some of our fill-up station down here, get some water for the day, whatever. That's what I have this evening. Questions?
Can you repeat that whole thing?
Yes, I can. I wanted to, I had a chance to be at the same meeting with Steve Powers, the city manager of Salem, and he took specific time to come over across the room and tell me how much he appreciated because City of Independence was one of the first, if not the first, to reach out to them when their water crisis hit. And he was extremely appreciative of your phone call and staff work. They, he was really personally touched that they weren't in this alone and it made, it was a big deal to him. He went on for a bit to say how much of the, they really appreciated the neighborliness. And that's, that's wonderful compliment from, from them. I just wanted to let you and the staff know that it was sincerely appreciated. They asked that I specifically mention that to all of you in this meeting.
Thank you for that. We, we, the city managers meet once a month at the government's, and he spent a good portion of that talking about lessons learned from this and they were alive for him and his staff. It was a, they've known it was some exceptional challenges and their, you know, their surface water treatment was something we're not into yet and we will be, presents tons of challenges anyway. And so it's just, you know, he's learning all about that.
Additional, any questions from staff, I mean for, for staff? If not, I'm going to continue us moving forward. I think you have, I think you have Ramon Martinez.
Yes, please. So Ramon Martinez is our new, he was our community engagement, our community engagement manager, we work through the titles. Community engagement manager is going to talk to you about, you know, he's been on the job of the staff for several months, he's going to talk to you about what is on the news world and some of the things he's doing. And he's been extremely active and I think you have a presentation to go with this.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City Council.
Thank you for having me, Council. Before I just touch on my work, my report, re-report, I just kind of want to just briefly provide a snapshot of my service background. My background is really, it's really the variable in the plan here today and send for you. But my experiences have taken me across the country, doing national disaster relief efforts with America or FEMA and the National Guard. I've done work with, I've done used to work with the Utah Conservation Corps and also done have to have humanity, worked in thirteen different states. And a lot of that is all kind of compiled and just really just led me to, it just helped develop my perspective and this love for serving. So my path has, I'm really happy that my path has led me to Oregon and ultimately here. And so during my two months of work, a lot has been centered around getting acquainted with my role. A lot has centered around getting acquainted with my role and establishing those key connections. And so my involvement has been at service level with a lot of groups and organizations, but as I get more experience and seasoned, I'll be able to dive in deeper with efforts. And but so far, two month mark, I'm, I'm really pleased with how things, I think I have a good way to land. But some of the efforts have been participated in locally, it's been helping out, I think my first intro to the community, the chess program, the library, and of course, myself in the morning world, brought in the crew. Let's see here, and also being president at I E S more in Pennsyl Elementary School and kind of my first intro there was linking up with the P teacher, Nate Reiner, and helping out with their miles program. Those kids have a lot of energy and it's really fun to be in the mix there. And then with both of those connections, both of those examples, that this has kind of been my, kind of my, a little bit lead into making connections with parents and just want to keep that going. And also, one of my other first experiences in the community area has been attending service integration team meetings, which are held in Monmouth and the Christian Church down there. And it's a monthly gathering that draws almost about thirty organizations, not just in our immediate area, but in Polk County. And that has really given me a vague perspective of services that are offered in our community, which is incredible. A lot of caring people. It's a very caring group and I'm really glad to be in the mix there. And tomorrow's end of the year celebrations, so really happy to be there, just being amazing and also celebrate past experiences before I came along. So they helped out a little bit with the Independence Police Department and helped up, helped get the word out with their fill the bus program or fill the bus event, which was, had two kind of objectives, one being support the local food pantry and two, it had a service, or it had a helmet component. It really kind of provided comments to our community and that gave, that was able to supply fifty comments to our area youth. So really, it was a pretty awesome result. So also helping out, just recently helped out with their managed competency tests and it's really great to help, to assist, charge by notice in that effort. The community guest, the planning is underway, August 24th to 26th, and that will be here before we know it. And, but linking up with a community member, Elena Peña, and very excited to be in that mix there and join forces with her and some of the city staff. Let's see here, so also summer school efforts, the next meeting we actually have tomorrow, we have, meeting of the team there and, and really trying to identify ways that the city can enhance their efforts of really just keeping that spirit of summer school high. And also, some of you have probably saw this in the community, but just kind of a, for fun, just a weekly gathering for runners and walkers, just kind of a nice way that gives folks a nice reason to get out the door and get their comfy shoes on and meet their neighbors. And also it has a kind of tasty component to it too, so we're kind of trying to encourage the eat local and so we got, I can provide you later, but I've got a Spanish and an English version here, really kind of, I'll start scanning these across the area more, but I can have you guys check these out after this meeting. Get a little preview here. Really, just, also up on deck would be my, our, I guess, some really great opportunities to, well, my first opportunity to really enhance the work I'm doing is this Thursday, I'll be attending the Latino Equity, Health Equity Conference in Portland and really hope to gain a lot from that and come back with more tools and a tool belt. And also another, a lot of, a pretty wonderful opportunity came about with an inclusion level to, professional development opportunity to take the certificate in local government with focuses on the fundamentals of equity and inclusion specialization. So really excited about that. Thank you for that. And, and with that, I'll just finish by just saying I'm really excited to be here and onward. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ramon? Please.
No.
No, exactly.
Mr. Mont, just, I really appreciate you being so active right from the get-go, kind of being with partners, getting the different agencies. You visited O C E C two and live with a lot about what we do and our, our families that are here in town, so thank you very much for taking the time to do that.
Great time to talk.
Great. There's some questions.
Yes, I want a copy of that so I can publish it for you.
Yes.
And online monthly magazine and we give out community information.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time to visit with us this evening. We have a, we have a request for a five minute?
Probably two.
A five minute break. We're going to, we're going to recess for five minutes and we'll come back for our final item. Okay, we're back in session, folks. Thank you, everybody, for, thanks to council members, really appreciated your indulgence. We're going to go to unfinished business and I'm not sure who's carrying this, Mr. Klein, Mr. Powers. You've got the ball?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank Karen, actually, first of all, everybody needs after Ramon. Somebody's talking about empowering people to tell people they can't do. So here June 12th, City Council meeting, you ask staff to prepare a brief discussion about how we got to this prohibition on vinyl fencing. So you have a memo in front of you.
Right.
I'll just briefly talk about that and try to answer any questions you might have. So this, this issue came about from a question from a resident of the airport requiring as to some of the specifics on the city's fencing regulations, specifically height and material types. And in fact, the city has a prohibition on vinyl fencing since 2012. Vinyl fences have been illegal in the city of Independence. And that was a discussion that started, I believe, in 2010 as part of the discussion around a broader look at residential design standards and looking at ways to improve the aesthetics of homes, create more of a traditional aesthetic in city's new development areas. It wasn't adopted in 2010, it wasn't adopted until 2012, but nonetheless, it was adopted. The city reporter and I did a little bit of digging through those minutes where ordinance was adopted and we're unable to find a lot of detail around the city's discussion in that adoption. But you know, it was approved, it was approved as part of a typical ordinance. So the way that works is that we would have sent at that time a notice to Department of Land Conservation Development forty days in advance. This is just kind of the standard procedure for a man here developing code. And then a public notice was published in the local newspaper twenty days in advance. We have a planning commission hearing. The planning commission made a recommendation to the city council. We had another public hearing before the city council where residents were invited to participate and provide testimony and the city council ultimately made a decision to prohibit vinyl fences. So we're here today with a prohibition on vinyl fences. The, the question was asked at the last meeting on June 12th, if there's the ability to withhold enforcement of the city's fencing prohibition. And the advice we got from the city attorney was essentially that it would be unwise to do so. The city, the city has the discretion to, to execute its enforcement at its, at its leisure, however, we do not have the ability to not enforce discretion should we get a complaint from the public. And so the advice we got was that, you know, if, if, if we, if we gave the advice to particular residents that we would withhold enforcement, we'd still be obligated to enforce if we were in receipt of a complaint from our resident on that issue. That's, that's essentially it in a nutshell. I wanted to just provide, and this is a response to a question from one of the councilors, some feedback with, with our plans for amending the development code as we go forward. I, I created a little, created a, maybe I'll just pass it out so we can look at the same thing as we're talking. Currently, the planning staff, I guess the city has planning staff availability for about point six to point seven F T E per year. So that's, we're, we're here about three days a week is essentially what that means. So we're responsible for, in addition to code amendments, responsible for staffing from counter, attending meetings with the public and development community, et cetera, et cetera. So again, we have, we have availability currently for about point six F T E of our, our current planning responsibilities, which include again, attending the front counter and responding to development requests, consume about two-thirds of that time. So I'd say that consume about point four to point five F T E, which leaves roughly, let's just say four hundred, four hundred to five hundred hours per year to take on code amendments. And so what, what this list is, is this is a current list of amendments that we know or have received requests to make to the development code or other long-range planning projects that, that we know are in the pipeline. Things like amending our transportation system plan, looking at opportunities to identify funding opportunities for public improvements in the Southwest Independence concept area, et cetera, et cetera. So they, those are, these are all either long-range planning activities or code amendment projects that are likely to require planning effort in the next couple of years. And what, what this list is for, and this list will continue to grow as we receive requests like this request to amend the code or potentially amend the code for vinyl fences. We anticipate that this, this will just become an ongoing log of amendments to the development code that on an annual basis, we can come before you and show you, and then based on our availability, the resources we have in the planning department, you can select what are your highest priorities in a way that, in a way that is, is meaningful. Like it's a way that we can actually allocate resources to in a way that, and based on the resources, we, we expect to be able to get done in that year. And so I mentioned in my staff note to you that we, we would like to, I guess our recommendation from the planning department is to include this request to amend the code on this list of items for you to review in coordination with these other items so that we can do it in kind of a more coordinated and efficient manner. So that's, that's, that's kind of a summary of where we're at and our recommendation. Sean, happy to answer any questions.
Council members, folks. I'm going to start the other, is the other end want to start this time or stop now? Tom, I think you want to. Trying to pass it around, I keep always turning it right. Yeah, so, so you're talking about doing a general update of the code, the developed code, which would be part of it, include fences and, and I think the timetable you had mentioned was we would start that process beginning of 2019.
What, what we've done in other cities is that as part of your like annual goal-setting discussions or budget discussions, that would be the time, I think would be, it would make the most sense to review that so that you can see, here's, you know, here's a planning department budget or here are our goals and relative to those goals, how do you want to allocate this department's time to these different projects? So you can really decide whenever you want to do this, but yeah, I was thinking at the first of the year or on the budget.
That would be just to decide what our priorities are, not actually start the process.
Correct.
Correct.
Councilman Morgan, if you have a question?
Yes. I want to back up a little bit and ask, how recently have there been any complaints about vinyl fencing?
Since I've been here, I started here in May of last year, I don't believe I've received a complaint about vinyl fencing.
Because I know there's a fairly prominent one on Monmouth Street. Because I know there's a fairly prominent one on Monmouth Street. And I personally would, because we're going to be having a new city manager next year, I would want to dilute a goal-setting session with things like this. This is for housekeeping, updating, advancing, and so on, and I think this would deserve some, some separated review of that and not, not just step on the goal setting.
I have a question, just for clarification here, I mean, I'm going from the, from large to small, just, just so I make sure that I understand, even if we wanted to do anything, just the process with, with notifications, planning commission, with the whole, just, just moving any, you know, any process forward, that's a several month process.
Right.
That's actually two or three months in the.
I think it's about three months.
About a three months, even if we said go at the moment.
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, that that's, that's in October. Yeah, that's, that's October, even if there was a go at that, this or. I appreciate for that, that clarification. And while I'm sensitive to, you know, folks who are trying to do the right thing, and yeah, sometimes processes, well, sometimes legally required processes, a challenge, excuse me.
I'm going to defer to that side of things.
Yeah, go ahead, excuse me.
So I noticed that in the report was kindly included the expense to, in the past, to, for instance, the setback amendment that was done. So I miss a pretty comprehensive list of overall goals. Is there a similar list of code items that could perhaps be addressed all at once rather than, than piece malle to help reduce the financial impact of that code?
Yeah, and so, right, so good question. And that, this list will be a list that we haven't received, decided this, we haven't really received any formal requests or, I guess, simplified code amendments that we haven't taken on yet. The city recorder and I are currently working on a project very similar to that. It's kind of a general housekeeping update to the, to the development code, such as correcting references and scriptur errors and things like that. So from what I understand, the city have worked on that for the last couple of years. We're wrapping that up now and hoping to have that to you. But, but right, as, as we continue to receive requests, similar as the ones we have today, we'll continue to add those items to this list. So this, a lot of the things you see here on these first fifteen, fifteen items are more significant, major transportation system plan, they wrap a lot of things right, but this list would also include the more simple, just basic code amendments. But the idea of putting them all together is so that, again, based on resources that are available near the planning department at any given year, you can kind of pick and choose which things from those different levels of effort are important to you to tackle in that, in that upcoming year.
Additional questions?
Well, I guess I kind of get back to the matter at hand is the vinyl fence that these people want to put in. I understand that legally, there's nothing we can do at this moment to take care of And Councilor Martin had mentioned a moratorium about, you know, not enforcing that. Do, would we need to do that? We don't really force a lot of our code unless it's complaint-driven or it's new development or something like that, that's correct.
You're right.
Yeah. So there, there would be no need to do anything for the council to do anything. It would be at their risk whether they want to put this in and hopefully the neighbors and rest of the city is understanding and wouldn't do anything. But we would be forced to act if somebody complains.
Correct, we're obligated to. I mean, that's, that's kind of the central role of the planning departments that we are kind of obligated to enforce, the adaptive rules of the art comes. But you're right, so I mean, and, you know, a very good point was brought up that, well, essentially penalizing people for coming to ask about how, what's the correct way to proceed. And that's, that's true, but essentially, our answer to that question has to be consistent with our adopted, our adopted standards.
Good night. I just, I hate to, it's not true that it's penalized for asking, so I do want to clarify on that point, because the risks to the person who acts in non-compliance with our code is much higher than those that come in and ask. You know, there is, there are daily penalties up to $500 for non-compliance. So that is the risk when you go forth and act absent, you know, to express information. But I would also say, because we struggle with this, with the Historic Preservation Commission, we, and this is maybe a little aside of just the vinyl fencing issue, we need to think of ways that we can promote good behavior, promote people, you know, better advertising, better education, whatever we can do to get people to comply. Because people are, I mean, honestly, people are just not paying attention and doing stuff all over town and not getting that vice for it. Yeah, if we were to go and start complaining, you know, we can find these people, but, but it's, it's not happening. Hence, some of the vinyl fencing that we do have, that is not necessarily quality we want to see. So I guess I would, to that end, I would hope we could maybe do some thinking of, of some way, and I know we're struggling with that with the Historic Preservation Commission, of ways we can help promote good behavior and educate the public so that they know when they should check, what they can do to check. Yeah. And I don't mean just take away from Zach, but I think that probably if you were looking at me when you were making those comments.
What's it, it's a broader, it's a much broader.
So, you know, what is good behavior, what is expectations, you know, when you, when you adopted the residential design standards, you know, there, the idea, the notion was to improve the quality of the community in a certain level of consistency and restore sort of that, you know, the traditional look in, you know, in how neighborhoods are designed and built. We start to the extent, staff just takes this direction from council on these things. So, you know, we want, certainly want to get a good education campaigns, you know, talk to people about this, you know, to, to in fact make changes that are consistent with this, like restoring preservation grants that we issue. You know, we work in many ways to try to encourage what you are calling good behavior, but at the same time, you give us this prohibition, we also have to act, you know, for that. I mean, it's, you wouldn't like what it would look like if we arbitrarily, if staff chose what laws we want to enforce, what we don't want to enforce. That's not, you know, that's not how government works effectively, officially and fairly. So I think these, you have a lot of the folks who are sort of obligated, we are obligated to enforce, and we've taken a complaint-driven approach to enforcement, so that's not heavy payment, but that, and so, you know, as you say, there are plenty of people who sort of take it by themselves to unconsciously, unconsciously, you know, I have no idea that they're violating our code because they don't reach out and ask that question in the first place or don't care. Either way, if the one complains, you know, they score, they score at least a temporary victory. At the end of the day, if you want to see change, then it really is not you to take this, tell us to take this, we'll take this out of sequence, that certainly is an available option, you know, that's what we'll do, that's our job, and that's, we would do that without a complaint. You know, I think Zach's job is to inform you of, you know, how we do business now, how we try to officially manage those resources that we have. As he said, he's like, you know, basically sixty percent time, you know, survey the community, and we're managing a lot of development at this point in time, you know, as I was telling you a little bit earlier. So it's, it's always a balancing act, whatever is a priority, you are in charge of helping to set those priorities.
So, you want to add something?
Yes, I do. I know that it had been suggested that after the beginning of 2019, we would be looking at maybe a bulk of changes to the code. Is there any reason that that can be started at an earlier date since you had mentioned that there weren't a lot of suggestions for code changes that were at this level? Could we not get that started before the end of this year, like in October? And it would be kind of nice to see the city council right now be, be able to follow through on this because we all have some collective experience here and what's gone before and what's going on now. And I also think that, I know you can't, you can't force people to read the code, and I would ask my enemy to read the code. It's not a pleasant read, but I think that, that we need to look at some of those archaic things and the things that are out of date and start dealing with them before the press of all this new building comes on and all the new things that are happening in the park and in Independence Landing. Let's just, let's just get going on it and get the process moving now.
So, Mr. Klein, I think you wanted to add something here.
No, I, you know, and I've talked to Zach, and he's certainly, I think he's ready to make that kind of move, certainly move it up in your, in your direction. I would know that that press development is already on this, not that it's coming, it's already here. But that said, you know, and Zach is very experienced officially, all experienced every day. That said, I think, you know, Zach can make that alteration in his schedule and take this on. So if October is a target date, I think we're happy to do that. Again, if you want to take this particular matter out of sequence and move it up, you know, we also take, we can also do that as well. That isn't the recommendation to you, but it is, you know, we understand that it may be a priority before you.
So what we can do here, so I'm trying to kind of go less around direction here, is that, so the suggestion is do this in October, you know, get this started in October because building season will have been built and/or, and, you know, most people aren't going to start a lot of new construction as the ratings begin, because that makes it sound like, like the jungle. And we can begin that process, then it doesn't necessarily help the specific situation. But we weren't going to get to it till October anyway, you know, and yes, I know that that doesn't make everybody happy, but I think that, does that seem like a, as a reasonable way to move things forward?
But it's American or otherwise.
Yeah, and I'm asking, I'm, you know, I'm listening.
Okay. I think if we're going to do, we want to do it right. Although it's not ideal for some of our city residents here. I think overall, we have to.
So, other comments?
Would there be a possibility of courtesy contact in the event that some kind of complaint is triggered?
Triggered what end, I'm sorry?
If, if there's a complaint on the vinyl fencing, the specific one that has been brought to our attention here, if there's a complaint that does come in, is there a possibility of doing a courtesy call since that particular constituent made the effort to come in and start all this going?
I don't know.
What, my question would be, what purpose does the courtesy call?
Just to say that we're, we're complaint-driven on our enforcement and we've received a forewarn, forewarn, that's all.
And this is in the, this is in the event that the fence is constructed prior to the code amendment, you know?
Can I, can I?
Is the point that that call will go out to the constituent before code enforcement took it down there?
No, I think it could be done through code enforcement.
Their normal process is to, so I think technically issue warnings anyway.
Okay.
They work with folks, I don't think, I think we can fairly lightly handle most our code enforcement.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about the code enforcement real quick?
I'm going to let, I'm going to let, I'm going to let you connect up with, with the staff people who give, give you detail on code enforcement. I don't think any of us have any influence. We're, no, we are.
We're all about the planning condition.
So what we're going to do is, I understand it, and tell me if you want, is we'll see that, we'll see something coming back in October and starting our process. Is that what we're kind of talking about?
More, more of both, I think.
Yeah, I mean, kind of.
But if you start in October, it's three months from there reports approved, so.
Okay, all right.
So we just.
I'm sorry. We are now into council announcements? People have announcements?
Just, please, really quick, I don't know if you all noticed, the wave of new families coming into town this summer, are from California and all, and I just wanted to say welcome to those families that are coming here from out of the States, doing really hard work on the field. And I just kind of want to say, welcome to the city of Independence, giving you a solid investment.
Great.
I want to offer, I'm offering kudos today. I want to specifically, I know the planning, the public works director is here, and I just wanted to say I was down at the Saturday Market this last weekend, and they and many other people are very, very appreciative of the work you folks put in to take care of some of the sidewalks that the city has control over, you know, where the lifting concrete is. Folks came in, got the work done, people were thrilled, and thank you for getting that done before the Fourth of July. Really appreciate that. And several people made comments as I went in for my weekly goodies down at the Saturday Market, is either cinnamon roll or a, or a ten-minute massage, so I have a choice.
You're so evil.
Yes, one is less fatty. But several people made comments, I just really appreciate wanting to know that it's noticed, it's appreciated. Thank you very much, and I love the work you're doing. Is there anything else that we need to do tonight, folks?
I'm going to throw out a quick plug for the little bit before I'm downstairs tomorrow night, six to eight, to the office and go to the councilors, and I'll make our community an even more wonderful place.
Great. Also want to extend, I neglected to do this earlier, I wanted to thank Representative Paul Evans, who's come to join us this evening, just to get reconnected with municipal government. And I really appreciate seeing the former mayor with us tonight and appreciate all his support for our community and thank you for being here, appreciate that. If somebody would like to send us home?
No, George.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
And opposed? Thank you very much.